Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by Julie. Hey Julie.
Hi everyone.
So we're really excited to have you here today, especially for those of you who have maybe been with Young Living for some time. Maybe your business has taken a backseat, you've had to sit out a season. And you are looking at ways to grow or rather regrow your business and your team. We're going to get into what that looks like today. We're excited to be here with you as always. This is a live weekly call that we offer to anyone in Team Young Living. That's anybody, anywhere in the world who shares Young Living, you're welcome here. And of course with Get Oiling, you have everything that you need all under one roof to manage your business. So again, excited to have you here. Hope you'll join us for one of these live calls if you catch this as a replay. Julie and I are going to pop out a video. We've got a lot to get into on today's call. And we'll come back and join you here in just a bit. Go ahead and head over into the chat like Christina just did here. Let us know where you are coming in from. We're really thrilled to have you here today and excited to see where in the world you are coming from. This training today, by the way, is actually one that is a special request of a member of our community from Singapore. So Leona, if you're here, go ahead and let us know. We'd love to bring you out to chat. If you're watching this as a replay, we totally don't blame you because it's very late where you are and you should probably be in bed. Either way, so today we're going to talk about how to regrow your brand partner business. And I put re in question marks here, or sorry, questioning in parentheses here. Because this, what I'm going to share with you today isn't just for you. If you have grown Young Living before and have maybe fallen back in rank or lost volume, this is going to work for you as well. If you have never really endeavored to grow a brand partner business. So this isn't just about how to regrow, it's also just generally about how to grow. I will talk about some specific things that you might choose to do if you are going to be regrowing your business. But this is also for you if you're new to this as well. Alright, so today we're going to talk about a little three-part formula that I've put together to help you regrow your brand partner business. And then we will get into live help and Q and A. Selba, if you're here, maybe let us know in the Q and A or in the chat as well. I've got you down for us to discuss your website here today as well. So if you have questions, regardless of whether they pertain to today's topics, I want to encourage you to go ahead and add those to the Q and A. You can do so throughout the call. This is not just an opportunity to learn with what we're discussing today, but it's also an opportunity for you to get live help. Julie is an absolute expert in our platform and the things that we're discussing here. She's built an organization herself with Young Living, so she's a great resource here. Please do go ahead and get those questions into the Q and A if you have them. And if you're watching this from YouTube as a replay, I want to invite you to come and join us on one of these live calls. It's getoiling.com/weeklyworksession and you'll be able to join us here. And of course, again, that's noon US Eastern Time every Thursday. Now, if you would like for someone to help you, such as myself, on a call like we'll have someone doing here today, go to getoiling.com/webstatereview. It's not limited to websites. If you're brand new and don't even have a website started with Get Oiling, you're welcome to take advantage of this as well. It's just an opportunity for us to take time at the close of one of these Thursday calls, typically in the last 30 minutes. These are one hour calls. And the second half we reserve for that working together. Now, if you want a hand, if you want somebody to just do stuff for you, that's an option too. Getoiling.com/concierge is where you're going to want to go. If you would like for someone to create a website for you, help you set up your system, or just sit down with you and walk you through a strategy, or really anything that pertains to using Get Oiling, we're here for you. Alright, so if you are here and you're looking to reclaim your rank, let me know in the chat. Is that something that you're looking to do? Or maybe you're here and you're just ready to bust through and hit the rank that you haven't hit before? So if you were growing previously, the very first thing that we need to know, we need to remember, right? And this is for you if you saw a spurt of growth a year ago, two years ago, six months ago. This isn't necessarily like, listen again, this isn't just about I lost volume during the pandemic or I had to sit out my, my business for a season. This is also for you if you saw some growth and what you were doing before wasn't working, right? It's not working anymore. Alright, so the first thing that you need to know if you're wanting to break through to your next rank is that what got you here won't necessarily get you there. Say that again. What got you to where you are right now will not get you to the next place that you want to be. Even if you hit silver before, even if you hit diamond before, what got you to diamond, what got you to silver, what got you to executive is not going to be the thing that gets you back to it or gets you beyond it. And that might sound counterintuitive, but the reason why is because the circumstances now are different. You don't have all of the exact same people on your team with the same buying habits and with the same sharing habits. The landscape has changed. If you are showing up on social media, which we all very much should be, like it or not, the landscape of social media and how people are influenced to make decisions changes daily. Things change, right? So what you did before is not what you need to do necessarily. And the thing is, is because you don't have the same team, the landscape is different, you may be different. You don't have the same business that you did, right? Again, if we're talking about you, if you had a very different looking business three years ago, 10 years ago, six months ago, you don't have the same business. We have to do things differently. What we have to begin with and agree on is that we are starting something new. We're building a new team. Yes, you still have your old people. We're not going to forget about the people who've stuck around. We're going to continue living on the people who stuck around. We're building something new. We are looking forward, not backward, right? Can we agree on that before we move forward? Are we all on the same page with that? We have changed, situation has changed, team has changed, company has changed. And where you show up and share changes constantly. We are looking ahead, not behind. So there is a three-part formula that we're going to discuss today, calling us our relaunch formula is three parts, develop, mobilize and sustain. And you're going to be doing some measure of all of these different activities in your business at different percentages depending on where you are in the process. So the relaunch formula is as follows. First, we have develop. So develop is where you are developing necessary resources to reach your goals. If you're here today live, you're doing that right now. You're working on yourself, right? So this is mindset, right? We have to develop our mindset. If we have never been able to move ahead to the next rank, it may very well be because we are limited in our thinking and the way that we act as a result, right? So we need to work on our mindset constantly, becoming someone who can earn that income, who can lead a team, who can influence people more effectively to be able to help them make those changes that they stick to, that inspires people to want to share. We have to become that person, right? So we have to work on our mindset. We need to have a sharing toolkit. Meaning we need to have a set of tools that we're familiar with, that we use consistently to share. And then we need to also have a set of tools and systems performing that we, things that we perform on a regular basis to serve and sustain the team that we have. Mobilize. In this area, we are mobilizing those resources that we have and taking the right amount of action for us to grow. So this is creating visibility for you and your personal brand. This is creating connection with people. It's collecting stories and collecting decisions, right? Collecting stories, meaning understanding the, the way to interact with people so that you can show them the progress that they're making so that that story inspires them. We'll get into a little bit more of that here in just a bit. And then of course, collecting decisions, yeses and noes from people who may want to get started with changes in their life using Young Living products. And then finally, sustain. This is of course, if you have built any size team in Young Living, this is probably where you trapped yourself because we focus too much, just generally speaking, as, as reps in the field of a company on, on managing what we have when we need to be focusing doubly on bringing new business in, right? So sustaining what you have and sustaining what you will build. This is how you engage, this is how you empower, and this is how you lead by example beside people, not in front of people, behind and with, right? Helping people to see a path forward where they're empowered. Now let's get into these in depth. First, develop. We need to protect and grow our mindset, right? How many of you have a habit of personal development? Pop your hand up or let us know in the chat. Do you have a habit of personal development and what is that habit? Is it books? Is it restricting access to negative inputs, right? Is it a mindfulness practice? What does that look like for you? So protecting, and actually I'm just staying on this for a second. I don't think that we give enough space to this. This is really important. There's two elements here. We need to grow our mindset, obviously. And I'm seeing we, you know, we're reading books, maybe we do, obviously that's fantastic. Surrounding yourself with like-minded people, those video chats, Debbie, that is so powerful. Meditation, excellent. I don't know that we put enough emphasis on the protect part of this. We really have to protect our mindset from the negative inputs, right? There is a lot of negative that can be found in the world, especially if you are reading the news or in the news feed, or if you, you know, have a lot of people around you who engage in a lot of negativity. You have to seek to protect your mindset. You need to also, and this is more of a leadership point, you need to protect the mindset of the community that you're building that is using and sharing Young Living. Misery loves company. Negativity breeds negativity. You have to make sure that you are creating positive space for others and of course maintaining that protective positive space for yourself, right? Really important. Then we need to work on establishing a sharing toolkit. Now what is that? I've talked about this on a lot of trainings before. If you've been on many that, that I've held, there's basically three things that you want to have available as options when you are sharing. You need to have some type of event, right? That's an in-person or virtual event that you can invite to. It can be your own, you could, you should absolutely have one of your own planned at any point in time, even if it's just once a month. And if you don't have something that week, you need to know who else is doing something that week so that you always have something that you can invite to that is an opportunity for people to not just hear about Young Living, but to hear other people's stories, okay? Additionally, three to four go-to sharing resources. This can be the Young Living website. This can be your built-in Get Oiling theme of choice. This can be a video that one of your favorite leaders made. This could be a presentation that you do. This can be a sway file. The, the sky's the limit. You need to have a few things that demonstrate the value of Young Living or maybe a starter kit, or how Young Living can be used for a particular purpose or use case. You need to familiarize yourself with just three to four of these so that you can use them quickly and easily to share when the opportunity to share arises. And then most importantly, you need to have your own story. You need to understand how to share your own story and any other compelling stories. Those are going to be even more powerful than the facts and details of sharing resources. And they're going to be just almost as powerful as being able to meet other people possessing stories about Young Living results, right? So how far have we come here? We are protecting our mindset and committing to grow it because we know that what got us here won't get us to where we want to go and who we were getting to where we are is not who we need to be to get to where we want to go. We need a toolkit. Events, always know an event happening this week and you better have one of your own every month because you got to get good at this if you want to lead, right? Have three to four resources that you know you can pull out and share and feel confident about sharing at any point. And then know how to tell your story and know a couple of other stories too. So that you can tell relevant stories to people that they are a fit for. Then we want to develop a system around how you work with your customers. We have extensive, extensive training and resources for you on this. So there's lots available if you want to dig into it. And then you also want to make sure that you set up and keep a digital calendar. If you aren't already using a digital calendar, blocking off time for when you're working particular types of tasks or taking meetings and meeting with people, putting your meetings on the calendar so people take them seriously and show up for them, get started with this. It will change your life and your business and the way that you work, okay? Okay, now in the next phase here, mobilize. This is the most important piece of the puzzle. Obviously what we just discussed, that is foundational. That's your structure. That's what you lean on. But this is how you run, okay? Mobilize, this is how you run your business and how much of this you do will absolutely be the primary determining factor of your success and your growth. So you want to start five new conversations every day with anybody, right? Ideally, you want to be cultivating space on social media or in your community to where you've got more opportunity to connect with people who might be more likely to be open. But if you're just getting started or you're unclear on sort of what that, that vibe or community is that you want to create, just talk to five new people every day. And these don't have to be brand new people. These can be people you haven't talked to in two years, people you haven't talked to in six months. Start five new conversations and then keep notes for your follow-up. This is part of the Brand Partner Pipeline series that we recently did on this channel. And I really hope that you have watched those videos. They are 30 minutes long. Obviously our calls are an hour long, but they're the first 30 minutes. There are four of them. You need to watch them. They should be required watching for anybody who wants to grow as a brand partner. Alright, now I'll show you where that is in just a moment. Now you also want to make sure that you are showing up, right? So on social media, and again, I really do believe that we all need to be on social media. We just don't need to be Young Living advertisements on social media. You need to be an advertisement for what Young Living did for you, right? And is doing for you without even having to say Young Living, right? You want to be out there showing people that life can be beautiful and amazing and healthy and people can thrive. And you want them to be really curious what the secret is, right? So you're going to show up and post valuable content, engaging content daily. Wherever you prefer to show up, whatever social media platform you like to use, the more the merrier in terms of the number of platforms. This is an opportunity for you to get visibility and this is very important. If you have a list of subscribers, if you have been following some of the training that we've been doing for years and you've been building a list of subscribers, make sure that you are emailing them. Again, providing value, engagement, et cetera, on a weekly basis. This is fundamentally different from sending out Young Living newsletters or Young Living education. This is serving an audience that is curious about how to make major healthy life changes that might be open to become Young Living customers, right? And if you don't have a subscriber list, don't worry about this yet, right? You also want to make sure that you're occasionally sharing some case studies, stories or testimonials and making sure again, that we aren't doing this in service of branding Young Living. We're doing this in service of generating curiosity so that people will be open to a conversation so that they can be introduced to Young Living, right? So we're not talking about product names. We're not talking about Young Living explicitly. And the bonus here is, is that compliance is easier if you're not talking about the Young Living name or Young Living products, right? So you get to share compelling case studies and stories every now and then. And then you allow people who are interested in getting those results to reach out to you. Or of course, you allow those things to come up in conversation with people. Again, you not being an advertisement for Young Living, you being an advertisement for what's possible in someone's life who's open to making a change. And then finally, in mobilize here, we want to aim to have at least 10 sharing appointments every single week from these conversations that you're nurturing. So this is what activity looks like. We've just talked about the structure you need to have in place, the things you need to do. You're showing up daily. You are providing value and inspiring people. Occasionally, you are going to share something really compelling about results you've seen someone get, right? You're starting those five new conversations every day and you're showing up consistently, becoming a better friend, listening closely for opportunities to serve. And you have, from all of that activity, generated at least 10 sharing appointments every week from those conversations that you are nurturing. Now finally, sustain. This is what it looks like to take care of our customers that we already have, the business that we already built. And of course, you know, if you are new to this or you're building from the beginning, understand that this is an important part of, of the work that you do. You're going to keep a cadence of calls with your customers. Meaning at expected intervals, you are going to be showing up, connecting with them and helping them toward the goals that they've shared with you. Make sure you keep notes so that you can stay effective, but you aren't chasing your customers and you aren't waiting until their order didn't process to care about what's going on in their life, right? We want to send a customer newsletter out once a month. Highly recommend, cannot possibly recommend enough that you go to the partners page or the content page on the Get Oiling website and find someone who does this really well and pay $5 to $15 a month to get gorgeous content that's already done, that you don't have to worry about creating, plugs right into your Get Oiling system, takes you minimal time. You've done what you've needed to do. All now, all you need to do now is show up for your customers following the systems that are required. You don't have to go reinvent the wheel. Now, if you have team who are actively building, have a weekly huddle. And if it's just you and one or two other people, find another weekly huddle that you can join. And this does not have to be your own team. This does not have to be your upline, downline, what have you. Go cross-team with this if that's what you have access to. If no one is offering something like this in your market, make friends in another market and do this partner with each other. We see incredible things. Obviously here at Get Oiling, we are team agnostic. We are team Young Living, right? So there's sometimes there are platforms that are created by one big leader's team or whatever. We at Get Oiling are team neutral. We are team all of you. And the things that we see happen when you put your heads and hearts together, ignoring that, you know, that you weren't making each other money, incredible things happen, right? So join a weekly huddle that already exists, get together in the Get Oiling community and put one together. If you're in a market where this isn't happening, say something in the Get Oiling community and let's see how we might be able to connect together, right? And then really, this is such an important mindset piece to adopt. This is protecting your time and it's also creating the outcome of the type of customer you want to develop. When someone has a need, asks a question or wants to learn something, please, please, please do not spoon-feed the information. Point to where you know the information is and allow that person to go explore it so that they can be empowered to dig deeper. The best way to get a customer for life who will explore the entire line of Young Living products and invite their friends to do the same, the best way to do this is to encourage curiosity and empower people to explore. So if you just tell them, oh, well, if you're dealing with this, here's the entire protocol that you should do and only do this. No, say, you know what? I've heard about a thing. Here's a link where you can explore this some more. You can do some research. Encourage research, encourage people to dig, right? You are not their doctor. You are not their customer service representative. You are support and facilitation for their life change that they are making, right? This positive life change that they're making and you are empowering and helping them stay accountable on that journey. That's where that begins and where that ends, right? We have to remember that in the way that we serve our customers, right? We will serve them best by empowering them to explore independently and of course to engage independently as well. Alright, so let's talk about what this looks like in practice. First, ideally, this is about 75% of the time we're in that mobilize activity, right? 15% of the time we are in our sustain activity that's serving our customers. And about 10% of the time, we are in development activity. This is ideal. This is not all the time. This is not everyone, right? So if you have a big team and you don't have any systems in place yet, it's going to look a little different. You're going to spend a little bit less time on mobilizing it first while you're developing resources and getting those sort of sustaining systems in place. And if you have a small team or you're just starting over, you're going to be working the vast majority of the time in mobilize, otherwise you're not going to make any money, right? So we want to make sure that we are working proportionately to our situation and to our goals, always understanding that those mobilize activities are going to be the way forward, alright? So I've mentioned that we do have these systems in place. You want to learn how to serve your people. You want to learn what it looks like to have this cadence of calls, the, the relationship building and the beginning with people who you might want to share with, the tools that you'll use. All of this I cover in-depth in this four-part series. It's 100% free. It's on this channel. And highly recommend that you look it up. It is, there's a playlist for it. Look up the Brand Partner Pipeline on our YouTube channel and it's all there. And if you want to learn more about generating stories that will sell Young Living more effectively than the website, this is where you want to go. You want to learn about how to frame stories, how to tell your own and how to create stories with the customers that you have so that they see the value that they're getting and they'll be more inspired to want to share and try more product as well. Alright, and then finally, if you want the whole big picture, if you are maybe at the beginning here, you're looking for a refresh, you want to start over, you want to build these systems up and work them as I've designed them and how I recommend to all of you guys and to the clients that I've had, the whole blueprint is in this Marketing Mastery Workshop. You're going to find that in the Get Oiling Success Academy under online resources and courses. Everything that I talked about in the Brand Partner Pipeline is in this course as well. It's just in the greater context of someone who wants to have a brand and a website and a mailing list and, and, and wants to have a vault for their people, like everything, everything you want to do in Get Oiling in the context of working this plan, the way I've shared today, is in this workshop. So if you haven't gone through and followed this, make this a project of the next season of your business. It will do wonders for you. The feedback that we've gotten from this is, is pretty phenomenal. I, I really wish that when I got started many, many years ago in network marketing, that I had a blueprint like this. So highly recommend that you guys take advantage of that. So keep in mind, as you are doing your work here, that you are not a Young Living billboard. You are not an oily billboard, right? You want to focus on creating connection and community and generating curiosity, right? You want to get people to want to show up and be around in the, in the sort of community that you're creating and for them to be genuinely interested in your perspective. And if you give away exactly what it is that you're doing, they're not going to be curious anymore. So we're not talking about Young Living on our social media. We're not. And we often, we're not showing bottles. We're, we're not showing diffusers. We, I mean, I'm sure you can show a diffuser if it's not like obviously branded, right? You want to sustain curiosity because you want people to feel compelled to reach out, right? Or to at least pay attention so they could figure something out. You got to give some, something to that part of their brain that's going to make them keep coming back, right? And if you aren't in that mobilization phase, if you aren't doing the mobilizing work, you're not going to grow, right? If we feel stuck, the best option is to move, right? Is to create movement. We aren't in quicksand. If you start moving, you will start growing. So make sure that you are really focusing on those mobilizing activities. I've heard this a lot and I'm not calling anyone out here, but I've, I've, I've heard this a lot, right? I have so many people and no one is sharing. Well, if, if you find yourself saying that, ask yourself, well, am, am I? Am I sharing? Am I leading by example, right? We want our team to share. We want people who have shared before to continue sharing. Well, if they see you continually enrolling new people, getting results for people, ranking up, winning contests and, and, and growing, you think that that might inspire them to maybe try again? If they just see you sitting still, why would they want to move, right? Make sure if you want your people to move, you, you got to move, right? And we have to, and this is a little bit moving on from that point. Make sure that you are really focusing in your mindset on detaching from outcomes. Some will, some won't. So what? Who's next? Some people will say yes to learning about Young Living, some won't. Some people will say yes to getting a kit, some won't. Some people will use that kit and have tremendous results. Some won't try. And then some will decide that they want to share and some won't. And you cannot have perfect influence over those decisions. So detach yourself from what you don't have control over, focus on what you do and just keep moving. Focus on mobilizing, focus on movement. Remember, and this is for the, those of us who are maybe Remember, and this is for uh, the, those of us who are maybe self-identified a little bit as perfectionist. There is no such thing as perfect timing. Your website does not have to look a particular way. Your member area doesn't have to be built. You don't have to have, you know, a thirty-seven step funnel. You don't. This work is the same work that was working for this company when it started over thirty years ago. There is no such thing as perfect timing aside from this moment right now. There is no better time to start moving than right now. And if you're looking for people who are ready for change, you will not feel um, demoralized. You will not feel disappointed. You will be excited. Because if you're looking for people who are ready for change right now, you're not going to be impacted by any of the negativity around you. You're going to focus on some will, some won't. So what? Who's next? Who is next, right? And remember, as you are doing the work, that if you are coming across as being genuinely interested in others, they'll be interested in you too. So do that work first. Have a pay it forward mentality in the way that you are communicating and it will come back to you. Now, this is the final thing I want to leave you with and I hope that this excites you. I hope that this frees you up uh, from any stagnation. I want you to think about mobilizing. Think about the work that you need to do as a card game, okay? Now, this is a conversation card game. It's very simple. There are fifty-two cards. In a standard deck of cards. Your job is to flip through as many card decks as you like to find face cards. Those face cards are Jack, Queen, King and Ace. That's about thirty-one percent of the deck. And those face cards are going to say yes when you invite, okay? All you gotta do, you got fifty-two cards in the deck. Flip through those as quickly as you'd like to and take as many decks as you want. About thirty-one percent of them are going to say yes to learning more. Are you going to care as much about the people who say no when you know that you're just looking for those face cards? Don't care about the twos, it's fine. There are twos, there are fours, there are tens. I'm looking for these four people who are ready right now. The aces, and this is about eight percent of them are gonna say yes and they're gonna build the business with you. The kings, the queens, the jacks, they will all say yes to Young Living eventually, right? That might be soon, it might be later. So another important thing to consider here is that the card values can increase. So if someone is a ten, they can become a face card with your level of connection and influence that you have with that person. You can nurture people to a higher card value. This can take time. But if you want to focus on just the people who are ready right now, that's almost a third. It's almost a third of the whole deck. Find those, right? And just continue staying in touch with, being a good friend for and looking for opportunities to serve the lower card values. And those will eventually become more bonus Jack, Queen, King, Aces, right? You can actually see a deck of cards uh, with face cards with a much higher percentage than thirty-one. If you are staying connected long-term. So those card values, of course, increase as you meaningfully connect. And every time you start or continue a conversation with someone you'd like to eventually share with, you are flipping a card. So if almost a third of a deck was guaranteed to become a customer, how many decks would you flip? And how quickly would you move through those to find the cards, the people who are ready to make a change? How much time would you spend on the twos and the threes that are ghosting you or wasting your time? How much time would you spend on them if you knew that your next loyalty customer was just a couple flips of the deck away? So let's get growing. Let's focus on finding people who are ready right now, right? Focus on people who are ready and let's get into it. So I would like to actually bring out uh, Leana, here, let me find you here. Kudos to you for staying up so late. Hi, uh, let's talk about uh, where things are for you if you'd like. Um, I've, uh, you can unmute if you'd like to chat. Uh, or you can let me know in the chat if you prefer not. Uh, there's no video here, by the way, which is um, if you're concerned about that.
Hi Ashley.
So good to have you.
Hi. Thank you for having me here and bringing me on.
Yeah, of course, of course. So tell me a little bit, uh, so you're in Singapore.
Yeah.
So tell me a little bit about, um, I mean, I, I know you mentioned that you, you have, you're using Instagram.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, tell me more about uh, how you'd like to grow moving forward.
Hmm, yeah, so I mean, a little bit of context. Um, I ranked silver in the year of COVID.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, so when we were, you know, there was that lockdown thing where everybody couldn't go out. So most of the classes I did was online and um, I guess everyone wanted more thieves. So uh, that's where the business kinda grew, you know? But then uh, once uh, the uh, the restrictions were lifted. You know, everybody started to go out and go to work and then, you know, they realized that. Eventually they, their young living business kinda took a backseat. Yeah, so I mean, I mean, we can feel the tide is moving and things are changing, you know? And I, I can't help but kept thinking of, um, you know, Albert Einstein who says insanity is doing the same thing. Over and over again and expecting different results. So I knew something has to change, but. I, I'm just like, you know, so when you brought up that mobilization, uh, you kind of shed a little bit of light.
Yeah, for sure.
How to move forward, yeah.
Yeah, and what I think, I think es- especially for someone who saw that amount of growth uh, during um. During one of the most uh, different uh, sort of circumstances we've lived through as the, as, as a race for uh. You know, in, in, in many, many lifetimes. Um, yeah, so, so you, you were able to benefit from that, which is a blessing. But yeah, I think that definitely indicates that something different is required uh, to, to be able to, to kind of recreate that. So what, what I would consider doing is um, it first make sure, cause you are in social media. Make sure, maybe go through and, and, and tidy up your uh, your social media if you need to. Uh, it so that you don't have a lot of Young Living stuff just out on your social media, right? Uh, so that would be the first.
Like a young living billboard, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So begin with that and then uh, really just start thinking about. You know, who the person is that you, that you really want to be attracting. Um, you know, this, this does look like somebody who is interested in uh, in healthy lifestyle. And maybe surrounding themselves with community. Um, you know, there's, there's definitely a lot of angles that you can follow there. It can be, you know, moms, it could be professional women, uh, you know, really whatever you're passionate about. And then just start showing up, you know, with, here's helpful hints, tips. Some of them can be lightly oiled, but I wouldn't really heavily oil any of this. Uh, or of course, again, you, use Young Living, cause it's all really about the curiosity. Uh, and, and it's about their goals, right? It's about what they want. So show up leading conversations that they're interested in. Uh, and then they'll be interested in, you know, how much more you know that they don't. And that's when you have that opportunity to connect them uh, more deeply to resources. Uh, you know, cause they, they need to basically indicate, oh, well, you know, you seem to have this figured out. I don't yet. Can you show me? And you want to create that phenomenon. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I guess, um, I've been sounding like a broken record and. And mentioning Young Living a bit too many times lately. You know, like in the, in the attempt to try and um, attract more people, I guess. Subconsciously, I'm pushing them away because you know, it's like Young Living and Young Living and Young Living again.
Yeah, it was, and, and again, I think that, that um. Those actions were reinforced positively during COVID because everyone was inside. Uh, people were more receptive, e- especially for, for growing and connecting and, and promoting from home. This became very attractive during that period of time because there weren't a, a lot of other options. So it, it can be really difficult. And, and, and I think that I, I see this, it, what, it's not just COVID, right? There are folks who have been with Young Living for a long time, who for whatever reason, when they got started, being a Young Living billboard. It could have been their, their market, the influence that they had in it. It could have been, I don't know, maybe they were an early one to do it, but for whatever reason, that stuff worked for them and it doesn't really work anymore, right? Like all of the people who just push Young Living on social media, they have large teams, right? So they're really just doing that for their teams and that doesn't help to get new people. It's just showing like, oh, well, there's a group of us doing it, so that's valid. And that's just not quite enough, right? Does it, does that make sense?
Yes, yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I would just think about the conversations that they want to be having. Cause if you are showing up relevant to them, so it, it's, it's sort of working counter-intuitively to a degree, right? Like, we know that we want everybody to know about Young Living, but the only way that they're gonna be interested in it is, is if they see. That Young Living can do something for them that they know that they want.
Makes a lot of sense. Kind of make me feel a bit silly right now, but I think it's okay, I mean.
Oh, I think that's a lot of us right now. It's not you, it's not just you. Pop your hand up or let, let, um, let's see, you know in the chat that, that this is not unique to her.
Alright.
Well, thank you for coming out. Do you have any other questions?
I didn't know I need this, okay. No, I thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you for staying up late to spend time with us.
Thanks, Ashley.
Of course. And of course, thanks again for providing us this opportunity. When you guys send us questions, uh, when you have requests. Uh, that's, that's where a lot of the trainings that we do come from. And obviously this one, I'd see, I wasn't sure that you were going to be able to join us here live today. So I just went ahead and created a whole training uh, that reflected some of the things that we've done recently that might be universally applicable. So yeah, that was certainly not a call out by any means. Uh, and thank you again so much for joining us. Alright, so I have uh, Felba signed up for a live work review. And you believe you have a form uh, on your website that you're wanting to use uh, and shares. So let's uh, let's chat. If you'd uh, like to unmute, we can talk through this together and then uh, take a look at that. If you're able to, let me see, if you could unmute.
Okay, great. Hi.
Hi.
Hi Ashley, thank you so much for having me.
Of course, thanks for coming out. So, so yeah, you, there's a form that you created, I assume on a page on your site. Is it this questionnaire here?
Yes.
Okay, awesome.
So, yeah, I'm taking little leaps of faith to get some more organization. What I, what I'd like to share with people. It might, I'm kind of narrowing down my niche. And so. I just, this is just my first little steps here. I'm just playing around. I'm not very good at tech stuff, but I'm, I'm determined to. Um, take small steps and you know, get better at it, so.
Yeah, alright, well, tell me a little bit about how you plan to use this and then we can talk about how we can uh, make some modifications to make it work for you.
Okay, so uh, yeah, like what would be the best way, like from what you'll have and get oiling too, cause I'm not. I've not played around enough to know like what kinds of tools are available. But um, yeah, so my goal is, um, you know, cause I've been with Young Living for six years and I. Um, was doing a lot of my um, building by sharing and making connections with people. And mostly one-on-one or in-person things. Um, um. And so I've got a lot of those people that stayed on, but then there's others that have not been able to stay on. And even though I keep sharing and I keep talking to people, I um, continue to do some kind of Zooms or inviting uh, to my home. Um, I'd noticed in those last uh, five months that, that people come and they're interested and they're learning, they're sitting around the campfire. But a lot of people don't have the finance or something to take the next step, but seems to be harder to get people on now. So um, but anyway, on the other hand of things, I realized that it'd be good for me to really get to know. Like what is, what is my niche that I want to serve? So I decided to go with um, serving Christ-centered, middle-aged women. Who are suffering from pain and inflammation, um, and are burdened with life's, you know, challenges. And have very little time to take care of themselves, um, to help them um, find simple solutions. Um, that they can incorporate, um, to get to the root cause of their problems. And um, find transformation, healing and help. So um, so, so then I narrowed it down that way. Because I have my own story for coming out of rheumatoid arthritis uh, naturally without medication. Um, I felt, I feel like um, I feel like a, a, something within me just wants to. Um, you know, reach out and help those mothers out there who are struggling and are ready for. Um, ready to take, you know, some, make a, make a shift and help, help themselves get better. Um, you know, in a more natural way. So how do I find these people like that? And so I thought one, one of my, to, to create like a free offering. Um, I'm thinking of ideas. So this is how I came up with this questionnaire. Um, thinking that, okay, well, I remember that I had pain. And I didn't really pay attention to it as much because it wasn't really that bad, you know? And then it got worse and worse over time. And then finally, when I really couldn't even walk and I couldn't even get out of bed, that's when I did something. So um, so I'm hoping to reach out to people that, you know, help them. Um, by answering questions, get, for they get to know themselves and realize, hey, you know what? I do have chronic pain, so.
Yeah, okay. So you want to be able to offer this?
Yeah.
You want to be able to offer this on your website or, you know, maybe on social, et cetera? And then after people fill this out, you're going to be able to reach out to them with recommendations, questions, follow-up, et cetera?
Yeah, like that. And then I'm, I would, I'm planning to do, like, I was thinking, this is my next hope is um. To have a little webinar that I put together. Um, so that, you know, when they go through this and then I, I respond to them with something, um, saying, you know, what. Um, what I'm seeing from what, from their score, you know? How much information they've got or pain that they're going through, um, and ask, giving them an option at that time to press another button. To um, to watch my little, you know, webinar where I share my, so, my steps that I took, my transformation journey. Um, and how I can be of more help to them, so.
Okay, I, I love that. That's such a great idea. So this is how I would set this up. First things first, we want to get these questions embedded into a form on the page. So what that essentially is going to mean is that question by question, here's our first one. And this will take a bit of time. We're not gonna be able to do that entirely on this call, uh, but you're gonna go under settings. And that's under the fields here. And then you've got, you've got name, email, phone. And then we can add just as many of these as we want. And this is going to be a um, a list pick one. Um, and this is going to be a yes or no, so I'm gonna add a yes. And I'm going to add a no. And so this is what we're going to do for all of these. And so if we. Um, put a question here, uh, I'll go back over to here, I'll copy the next one. And we're just going to keep repeating that to get all of these questions into the form, right? So here's the question, this is a list pick one, we're editing the list to have a yes and a no. Right? And so as we're doing this, um, we are, and let me just go ahead and put a form on the page. Um, oops, I'm gonna put the form on the page for now. Uh, here we go, we'll add the form tag, so the form will show up on the page in the settings, uh, the form. The capture form shows on the page. Uh, and so what you can do is you can actually start to see. Name, email, phone, do you experience persistent pain? Check yes or no. Is your pain accompanied by redness, swelling, et cetera? Yes or no? So you could go through and for each of these twenty questions, you're gonna create a yes, oops, sorry, a, a yes or no. Uh, in that, the capture form field. So that way they're filling out the whole thing. Uh, and then you could also include perhaps at the end. Uh, maybe we'll do, uh, this will be a long text on this one and this will be um. Is there anything else you'd like to share?
Okay.
Right? And you can go. Right? And you can go ahead and require responses to all of these, right? And so you're just gonna go through and for every one of these questions, you're going to create one of these. And you can swap them around, right? So, you know, you can leave this one, you can add add another one, move it above it, right? So um, yeah, so in all of these, it's a list pick one, you edit the list, you add the yes and the no. Um you make it required and then you do that for all of your questions. Now, the next thing that you wanna do here is um. You you don't have to put the message on the lead capture form itself. You can leave that blank. You can actually. Um maybe just take this quick and easy pain questionnaire. Basically, after you've gotten all of this information uh transferred over to the form. You can just delete this part and just move this up above the form. So you still have the same title, cause there's nothing wrong with what you've put here. Uh and then what you wanna do is uh down here under after a lead registers. You're going to attach a campaign here. Now, you probably don't have one created already. Uh but essentially, what you wanna do is create a campaign. And we'll just go ahead and create one just for for the sake of um of demonstration here today. So this would be a uh pain questionnaire follow-up. And we're gonna prefer email for this, cause we're not, um, this isn't really a text marketing endeavor. Um, we're gonna create the campaign. And then the first email that you send, it's gonna be uh day zero, so that's ASAP. So we'll say, thank you for filling out the questionnaire. Here's what's next, right? And so here you can say, I'll be in touch with recommendations. In the meantime, be sure to check out this video, right? And this is where you 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 give a link to the webinar when you eventually create it, right? You pop that in there. Uh and then you can create additional messages that follow up after this, if you'd like. Um you could also maybe attach an automation that gives you a follow-up plan, reminds you to maybe reach out to this person. Um in the beginning, in the beginning, you'll be catching them as they come in. So it's not going to be something you necessarily have to be reminded to do, cause you'll be getting the notifications from Get Oiling about these new leads. Uh so so you'll be able to follow up. Once you start getting, you know, two or three of these a day. Then you want to start introducing more automations to the process, but this is sufficient for now. Uh and so from here, this is that um follow-up. As our pain questionnaire follow-up, that's our campaign. Um and this is going to be pain questionnaire. So you can easily find the people who filled this out in your system. Um and then this, what page is this? Oh, you this is the same one that we're on right now. So where I would maybe send them here is to a like a confirmation page. Uh where you're telling them to maybe go check their email, you've uh you've sent them a bonus, right? Tell them I'll be in touch. You're basically reiterating, the reason why we're sending the email is because we want to get them in the habit of opening emails from us. But where you send them immediately after should just be a page that says more or less the same thing. Uh you know, thanks for filling it out. You've taken the, you know, the first step to improving your life. I'll be in touch within, you know, twenty-four to forty-eight hours. I've sent you a bonus. Go check your email for it right now. And then that link in the email is gonna take the webinar.
Very nice.
So that all makes sense, right? So you'd create an additional page that just basically says that. Um and then the final thing. On this page in settings, um let me see. In the sharing description, the sharing description, this is what's going to, you know, when someone shares a link on Facebook and it like populates an image and a little bit of text. That's what this is, right? Or if someone uh sends you a text and it populates again an image and a little bit of text. So this would be, uh instead of putting the questions in here, I would put something like um. Uh learn more about uh how to manage your pain or identify and manage your pain. With this quick questionnaire, right? So this is just telling them what they're gonna find when they click the link, right? And this also is something you could pop right here. This is gonna show up in search engines. Generally speaking, a page like this, I would make available by link only, like this. This is something that it's not just for any old somebody on the internet to discover. It's for people who are in the right place, right? Um that means on your website, on your socials, et cetera. Like, we don't want this to just randomly show up in someone's Google search results. Unless you're trying to be really strategic about that. At this point, we're not, so I would actually use the link-only option here. That means that this doesn't really matter as much, but these do. If you're going to be, you know, texting or posting this link anywhere. Um a sharing image, um you could certainly put here. It's not super necessary, though. Like, it'll it'll use the one that you use elsewhere on your on your website. Additionally, on a page like this one and the confirmation page, I would not show uh the header menu and footer. The reason for that is, this is essentially a landing page or a squeeze page. We want people to engage in what's here and only what's here. We don't want them to get to question three, say this is too hard. What else does she have on her website? We want them to finish what's here. And then when they go to the next page, we also want them to only do one thing, and that's what the page says, which is go check your email. Right? So in that case, on this page and that that subsequent page that you create, you're just gonna wanna uncheck the header and footer so that those don't show up there.
Okay, okay. So um where we just, so since I'm not very familiar with like how to do this, where is there? Could you point me like where I should go to 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 go get some? Uh I know you'll have a lot of training videos on um to become familiar with how to use all this.
Yeah, so there's a couple, couple ways to do this. Yeah, so forms, uh creating custom forms, uh surveys, quizzes. There's actually, if you type in form, if you click the little question mark and you type in form, uh this is the first thing that comes up. Uh you could open it up as an entire page and have it, you know, maybe in a separate uh window alongside what you're doing. Um so this kind of breaks it down and shows you where everything is. This is a good starting point. Uh another thing that you might consider is under the Success Academy. Uh coming over here to um to life training and replays, uh maybe typing in form here. And and we actually did, we've we've done a few of these. Uh so there are some of these trainings. And the the other thing that you might consider as well. Uh if um if you're really wanting maybe a little bit more hands-on help or you need follow-up, obviously, you're welcome to come back to this. And and we could do this again anytime. Uh but there's additional opportunities on these group help calls. Right here. And so um you can pick a time here with Pam, who is incredibly proficient in the platform. And in all, you know, manner of skills that someone might wanna have to use it. Uh so that's another great opportunity as well, if you wanna work one-on-one or in a small group.
Right, right. Okay, okay, that's good to know. Um, okay. So I'm, this is so helpful, very helpful. I still have to wrap my brain around some things. Um but I'll I'll re- replay and um but really, really, really helpful, like you helped me to see like. Um how to do the steps, you know, to get to what I'm trying to do, so.
Awesome.
It's gonna be, it's exciting. I mean, I I I'm also a little bit. You know, like I said, I'm not very tech savvy, but I but I keep telling myself, it's okay, you can learn a new skill and you can get better at it, so.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. And and you are, you you're working in that direction beautifully. So yeah, it's just a matter of just a couple of tweaks and that's learning how to use the system and that'll help you long term. So uh I think that your your idea for how you wanna set this up is a really smart one. It's gonna be a great way for you to take conversations and help move them in a more constructive direction. So if you do encounter people, you know, who are dealing with pain and fatigue and things like that, starting with that questionnaire really positions you. Uh in those conversations as a solution creator or at least a resource in that direction. And people will engage in their conversation with you subsequently in a very different way than if you were just still casually chatting. In the DMs or wherever you're communicating with somebody. So it 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 creates uh, you know, something that feels a bit more official. And and of course, from that point forward, people do uh listen a little bit more closely to the recommendations that you make. Uh and, you know, take the actions that they follow up with more seriously. So I I I think this is a really smart move for you. I'm excited for you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Sure thing, sure thing. Thanks for coming out.
Yes.
All right, all right. Um, okay, so a question here from Cornelia and Flo, I see your hand up. Could you let me know in the chat or in the Q and A if you were wanting to be called on? Uh sometimes the hands go up on accident, just wanna make sure. Um and I think um. Let's see, I've got Cornelia here too. Okay, so Cornelia, you've got a question in the Q and A. I'm gonna bring you out here real quick. Uh so you say with all the resources that we have from content providers, how would you share that? So Life Steps app or Workspace, most of them have tons of product guidance, recommendation, how would you use them? Talking about general pain points, background info, okay. Yeah, so generally speaking, knowing a lot of what's in Grow Workspace content. Um I know a lot less about Life Steps, but uh what little I do know. I think that they're really worded and structurally set up in such a way that they are for the customer. Uh which is really important, because like you you need to be committing the most of your brain power toward getting new people introduced to Young Living. And so having somebody else create the stuff that teaches the product to the people who said yes. Is it A, it'd be super time-consuming if you did that all yourself, and B, it's not really profitable to you. Sure, people already said yes, it could help them to buy more, but like it's it doesn't make sense for you to go reinvent that wheel. Um I wish it was something that the company did, but you know, we've got Grow Workspace doing a phenomenal job with that, so. Uh so yeah, what I would do, yeah, so so what what I would do in that instance is um. When you're having those um those care calls, right? Those follow-up calls that we talked about in the brand partner pipeline, week four, we're talking about taking care of our people and nurturing them toward their hero product. I wouldn't just dump this stuff out. I mean, obviously, my number one recommendation, if you if you can do it. And ideally, maybe you're paying someone on our team or Grow Workspace for this already done for you. Put all those resources into a member area and tell people to go explore it, right? That's going to be like the number one thing, cause that's like you can point to something and then they can fall down a rabbit hole of product, right? It's a protective, beautiful rabbit hole of just young living products and positive things about young living. And the more time you can get your customers to spend time in a space like that, the better off everybody's going to be, right? So that would be the number one recommendation. If you've got tons of resources, get them into a vault and then just start pointing to the vault. So that way, let's just say, for instance, you're having, you're on a care call with somebody. And they're talking about a goal of lowering their stress, because they feel like they're just a little too, you know, flying off the handle a little too easy or whatever. Then you can, instead of going and finding the link to the stress, sleep and sadness sway from Grow Workspace. You can say, hey, go log into our 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 member portal or whatever you like to call yours and uh and and type in the word stress. And that's gonna show you a couple of great resources and recommend some products, right? So now you're encouraging them to go and engage with a tool directly and to also find that if they type in other things, they'll find other answers there too. So that would be the most optimal way to do that. But the other way would be to just, you know, here's a tool, right? Not, I'm not explaining anything in the tool to them, I'm giving them the tool.
Okay, that um helps, of course, also to get more and more people on in the member area, because that's that's something I'm struggling with. I invite them, but they're not coming into it. So um and with my background, I am a naturopath, well, I worked like uh in Germany as a naturopath. And um I so want to. Go, well, I don't want to work one-on-one um on, I don't wanna treat people. So I'm I'm really backpedaling, but it's um it's so hard, because it immediately, if someone has a problem, I immediately go into solving mold. So I really have to work on my focus to to shift that into recommending here, find this. Instead of giving them the answer, what you mentioned earlier, so.
Oh, believe me, I so fully understand. Yeah, this, I I understand, cause you 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 see the problem, you wanna solve it. That's, it's not just a personality type, it is reinforced by being a practitioner. Believe me, I understand. So um so instead of um going from a prescriptive uh sort of hat. You would maybe switch over to a coaching hat, right? Like, this is where, instead of giving an answer, you ask a question, right? Um because what we are trying to do is not solve their problem, but empower them to solve their own. Because they're going to feel so much more empowered if it's their decision, their discovery, right? The what we're trying to do is not just help people, right? We're trying to create a movement where this is a a domino effect, right? And the only way to do that is to not be the source.
Yeah. Um yeah, okay, period.
You always have such great questions.
Good to hear it often, um more and more. Um thank you so much.
Of course, of course. Okay, Flo, I'm gonna bring you out, uh if you have got a question. Um so Felba's website uh currently is um, it's a built-in theme. It's a built-in Get Oil Link theme. Uh so she doesn't currently have um like a custom homepage attached to her website just yet. Uh and maybe if she would like, at some point in the future, we could certainly look at that together. Um you are uh able to unmute and chat if you like. Uh you've said you have questions about your site. Once a person registers, so they get access to my site next time, they access the site again. Yeah, so uh if you have a built-in theme with a uh a landing page that people have to register on first. Um depending on how long ago they registered or what device they were on, it will remember the device that they're on. Uh so it may offer the landing page again, um if they did this once on their phone. And then they're doing this on a computer or an iPad or something like that, right? A different device. So uh either way, I mean, they'll be able to access your website. They just may be presented with that landing page a second time. Now, um. Yeah, go ahead and if if you'd like to unmute, you can um chat away.
Okay, there we go. Um. But when they register again, does it make a new contact? What does it do?
Uh so if they're using the same information, so the same email address. Uh or same phone number, combination of the two, the system will know that it's them. And then depending on how you have um the campaign set up. Um it it may re-opt them into whatever the campaign is or start it over.
I don't think I have, I don't think I'm sophisticated enough to have a campaign. Uh can you pull up my site and see?
Well, we actually have a um a built-in campaign that you may be using, uh which is a really good one to use, right? So it's like a new prospects campaign and uh and and it could be that that's what you have. So we can take a quick look at that. Alright, so yeah, we have, this is um the landing page that we're using. Uh let's go take a look here and see.
I thought I had changed that where they have to register.
Um so it's here, but you do have this selected, so.
I thought I took that out.
Yeah, we can, we can, that's that's pretty easy to change. So it's gonna be under your landing pages. And is it, do you think it's this welcome one? No, that's no, that's not it.
No.
Um here, we can actually go under customize my site and find that. Need an energy boost, just the one. Uh boost, here we go. Okay, this is the one that we're using uh under settings. There is, yeah, the default campaign is what's going out. And so if you click edit campaign, it'll actually take you. You can't edit it, cause it's built in. You could certainly make a copy of it. Um here, let me actually just go to campaigns, I can take a look at that. So we'll say built in. No, that's not, cause new prospects is what it's called. There we go, new prospects. This is the one that is being sent. You can actually go in and see what all's in there. If you'd like, you can make a duplicate of it and make modifications if you like, uh but that is set up right here. So your default campaign, uh if you want to adjust your default campaign, that's actually in your general settings. Uh and that's gonna be in the same place that you would say create your email signature. Um and actually, no, you have no campaign, which if you are personalizing a website. I I generally do recommend using no campaign uh and not sending anything unless you specify. But new prospects is what you could absolutely include here for now, if you want something to go out to them. Or you could create something new. Either way, um that's something you would attach right here. And um, yeah, so let me see if you want to. Require uh someone to. This no thanks, I don't want to register. I'm pretty sure it's gonna be in your customize my site. It's a setting here, yeah, allow visitors to skip registration. So if you don't want that, no thanks, and you. It's a setting here, yeah, allow visitors to skip registration. So if you don't want that no thanks and you absolutely want somebody to put their information in. You keep this unchecked, right?
Right, I understand that.
Okay.
I just. I don't wanna get um people ticked off by not being able to see the site. But is that why I would create a member area so that they can skip it?
So a member area is gonna be a wholly separate thing. So generally speaking. Right? So having, it it depends on how you're using your website, right? So you're sending them to the built in theme. And if you are wanting people to access your website. And I actually, your, yeah, your homepage is this uh healthy living built in theme. Um, so if you're you're probably using your website to share Young Living. And if that's the case, then I would absolutely want to know when somebody goes to my website. And 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 reviews it, so I can follow up with them. So I would absolutely allow, I I I would not allow them to skip registration. I would require that they put information in. Now, what you may choose to do. Is maybe to modify the language on your landing page to make clear, hey, I'm so glad that you're here. On the next page, I'm going to show you all of this stuff. Uh, put your name and email in below to get access, right? So you're making it very clear. In order for you to go to the next step, you have to do this. So you don't allow them to skip. And instead of just having something ambiguous about an energy boost, we'll say, you know, welcome. I'm so excited you're here. On the next page, you're going to learn all about X, Y, and Z thing. Put in your information here and I'll take you there, right? Uh, and and in that case, that would work well. Uh, the only reason you're going to tick someone off is because the expectation and the deliverable aren't aligned. Right? So if we're saying, you know, hey, you wanna learn about my energy boost, uh, and then we're like, yeah, but you have to put your information in here. And they don't know what's supposed to happen next. And you know, the the two things don't necessarily align to them. That's where people might get frustrated. Uh, but if.
So would I type all, all that words is needed energy boosts? How much can I put in there?
If you wanna, yeah, if you wanna use that page, so like here, let's just go back to your landing page here real quick. And um what is this welcome one? Maybe we can, all right, transform your home, how to create a healthier environment. Uh, this is complete the form to gain access to tips, blogs helpful. This, this actually would be perfectly fine. Um, here's, here's what I would do, though. Uh, let's just create. A new one, I'm gonna use a simple short form, uh, and I'm gonna say. No, maybe I'm not gonna use that one. I'm gonna use something just a little bit longer. There we go. How about this one? So here I'm going to say. So I'm gonna say discover the secret. All right, and here I'm going to say. On the next page, you're going to learn. All about the secret that's changed my life. And then I'm gonna tell you to put more info here, right? So you need to just say more here. Um, and then here we're going to say. And here we're going to say I'd like more info. And here on the button, we're going to say. Show me. Secret. Okay, and down here, we'll say um.
Then we gotta take out that no thanks, I don't want to which.
Uh, that actually is something that we are um, we'll resolve that on the um. On the the website settings, the site settings page. So uh, fill out the form now. Oh my goodness, fill out the form now to get started. And I'll. See you on the inside, right? Okay.
Cool.
All right, so settings here, I'm going to use the new prospects. Here we go. This is going to be a homepage lead. This is going to be a homepage landing page. And um we're going to send them to your website homepage. Um, let's see. Should be good to go. Okay, so oops, nope, don't don't do that. Don't do goodness. Okay, here we go. Save. And now we can go over to customize my site. We're gonna use that. Homepage landing that we just created, we will not allow them to skip registration. And now it's a little bit more clear. Right? You'll need to put a little bit more information in here, right? So on the next page, you're gonna learn all about the secret that changed my life. It did this, it did that, it did the other thing. Um, fill out the form and let's get started, right? So now it's a little bit more clear. And when they fill this out, they they can't skip it, it will then take them to that built in theme. Uh, and now it's going to make a lot more sense to them in terms of just an experience. Does that make sense? Are you, are you still there? Oh, no. Okay. Well, I I hope that that helped. And um it looks like we lost you. Thank you guys for sticking around. Um. We uh obviously went pretty long today, but this is clearly a a great day for questions. Uh, guys. Come back next week. Actually, I think like the next three weeks, your mind's gonna be blown. Next week, we're gonna introduce a brand new feature to you that I personally have been uh, I've I've been holding my breath and crossing my fingers and toes for for. I'm not exaggerating seven years. Okay, so we'll be back next week and I hope that you guys have a great week in the meantime. See you later. Bye.